Lee, you good?
I'm good.
All right, so we're gonna call the Town and Portsmouth Planning Board meeting for Thursday, September 11th to order. We have a quorum with Ms. Wilson, Mr. Harding, Mr. Garso, and myself present. First on the agenda is the approval of the August 14th, 2025 Planning Board meeting minutes. What is the board's pleasure? You gotta turn that on, Luke.
I'd like to accept the minutes that I've written.
I just, I have one correction. It's on page two, second sentence from the bottom. It says, "Planning," it should say, "Planning in Public Works Departments." That's all I have. Is there, is there any others? Is there a second on the motion?
I'll send it.
Mr. Garso, is there any discussion on the motion? I'm gonna call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Uh, let's see. Next up is a continuation from our August 14th Planning Board meeting. This is the discussion of corrective plat and recommendation for the major land development known as Cutler Court for property located at Tax Assessor Plat 58, Lot 49, currently listed as Tax Assessors Plat 58, Lots 49, A through F, final plan decision recorded in Book 1863, Page 184, on June 19th, 2018. BMC Realty Partners applicant has requested a minor modification to the approved plan specifically to reduce the length of roadside drainage swales on Cutler Court. And I believe Mr. Bragger was here for the petition. Is that correct, Mr. Bragger?
Yes.
You just state your name and address for the record, please. And do note for the record that Mr. Klukis is, is present as well. Thank you.
Uh, John Bragger Jr., 144 Rhode Island Boulevard, Portsmouth, Rhode Island. Registered professional land surveyor and a professional engineer of State of Rhode Island. I am the engineer and surveyor of record on this plat, Cutler Court. Um, so I submitted plans basically two or three weeks ago to the planning office to outline what I had originally discussed back at the August meeting for recommendation to attempt to alleviate what appears to be some kind of drainage issues with a couple of the residents of this plat. Uh, I'll just go over what basically I had suggested before and what I did put down on the plan, which is to, um, exit, make the, the crown of the road at the cul-de-sac a little more exaggerated than the original plan as designed. And it's mostly, uh, pretty much to try to alleviate what is some of the drainage issues, most likely caused by 40 Cutler Court and their driveway. I believe the water comes straight down the driveway and potentially crosses the cul-de-sac, or some of it may, may do that. Uh, I haven't really seen any evidence of it, but I'm willing to accept that's a possibility. Um, so exaggerating the crown in the middle of the cul-de-sac would redirect any water that comes down that driveway and keep it on the west side of the road, thereby attempting to alleviate the drainage problems on 41 and 33 Cutler. In addition to that, a second means of defense, I think that placing a modified Cape Cod berm around the eastern side of the cul-de-sac, as shown on the plan, um, you know, a shorter one, maybe about three inches, uh, would also help to protect those two lots from any stormwater that may cross the cul-de-sac. Um, and so I think those two, um, items that are shown on the plan are certainly sufficient to protect these two homeowners, uh, in case there is some kind of a significant rainstorm and there's a good amount of water coming down that driveway and potentially, it's potentially water's coming from the old Tom's lawn and garden to that, that site. It is uphill. Um, I don't know that water is coming down there, but that's an uphill site and there's a lot of pavement there. So those are my recommendations that are shown on the plan. I don't know if anyone has any questions about, you know, what is shown on the plan. The other thing is, it came up, uh, at the last meeting that there's no crown in the road. And I also did submit from the as-built plan that I did back in 2023. It probably took a little over 300 topographic shots on the, the base course of the road through the center line, also around all the driveways and the edge of pavement. And the, the topography and the contours on here clearly show that there is a crown in the road. Um, as you get up to the cul-de-sac, though, it does appear that the crown is not quite as defined. And that's why I'm recommending that when the top coat is put on, that the crown of the road is paid attention to and is brought up a little higher than the original, uh, design plan back in 2000, the, the plan of 2018.
So, John, just to, first of all, I was gonna ask Ms. Hitchens if she has anything to add. I know you did a site visit with, with some of the town folks as well.
So myself, Kristen Black, the planning technician, Paul Rodrick, the DPW director, and Gavin Lopes, the director, the deputy director, did go out to the site today. And we were there for almost two hours walking the site. Um, it seems as though that it is 33 Cutler Court that does get most of the water from 40 Cutler Court. On, I don't know if Paul Rodrick's, the DPW director, wants to speak to that, because, um, it is the, the swale on 26 Cutler Court that you are asking to not be installed. Is that correct?
Oh, I'm sorry. You were asking me that. It's 26, no? Yeah, so there's about, the original plan showed a swale going beyond where the driveway is. I think I measured today, took some measurements on the plan. There's about 20 feet of swale north of the driveway on the west side that is missing. So that is, um, and, you know, I did see some photographs actually that one of the plaintiffs, let's say, submitted, and I saw water coming down the driveway of 26. And then, from what I can see, was staying on the west side of the road, coming down the driveway and just, I didn't see any of it crossing the road. So, um, the swale that we're talking about eliminating from the original plans may, may not help. I mean, if it's there, it will intercept some of that water. But I also think that, uh, water from 40 Cutler Court's driveway is potentially a problem. And that's why I discussed enhancing the center line grade.
We would agree that, um, due to the, the terrain of the driveway from that property, um, it is hard to maintain that. Um, we did walk and talk with Ms. Ware, uh, as well as, um, Mr. Johns down at 7 Cutler Court. We would have talked to anybody else that had, had come out. Um, for the, for the most part, the drainage does seem to be working. We were happy to, to see that. Um, to, Mr. Rodrick, do you have anything specific to see or say since you're here?
Could you state your name and address for the record, too, please?
Paul Rodrick, 90 Fury Avenue, Tiverton, Rhode Island.
Thank you.
So upon looking at it, it doesn't seem like eliminating the swale on the west side is gonna cause or help to resolve the problem on the east side.
Okay.
Um, on the east side, I'm just worried that I think the crown will help it and the berm will help it. I just don't want to divert more water from that berm down to the next property. As long as you think that the water is gonna go down that berm into the swale instead of onto the next property.
Yeah. Well, that's the way it's designed.
Yeah, you have to speak into the mic, John. Could you just tell us exactly where the berm, where you think the berm is gonna go, John, in your current design? Is it gonna be north of Mr. Jeffrey's driveway and then go around the cul-de-sac?
Yeah, north, and also north, excuse me, north of 41 Cutler Court also, because apparently they've got some kind of an issue with water coming across the cul-de-sac, too. So I think it would be prudent to just wrap it all the way around or down to Mr. Jeffrey's driveway. Um.
So I, I, I also went out to the site. It, it, it appears that, how, how much would you be talking about raising up the, you know, you were gonna exaggerate the?
Uh, two tenths, I think. That's about a little over two inches higher.
So the whole thing will be two inches higher than what it is now?
Just through the cul-de-sac, yes. Just, not the whole road, just the center line.
I see.
The shoulders should stay the same, so we've got a little more of a
Yeah.
a pitch there. Um, and then again, once the road is brought up, the inch and a half with the top cost, water should get into the swales, I think, currently, because the shoulders are probably a little higher than the pavement, that the water stays in the road for the most part. So it'll, I think it'll enhance the, uh, you know, the wa, the water will get into the swales once the pavement's brought up.
Thank you. Can we talk to Mr. Rodrick again? Thank you. After you heard what Mr. Bragger said, do you think that this will be a solution that we can live with here, sir?
I think it's definitely worth a try, um, and see if it works after it's paved. We still don't have to, um, complete the project. If that's not done, we might have to add more swales later.
Okay.
Uh, continue a swell under that driveway, Mr. Jeffrey's driveway, which would entail cutting up his driveway and putting a pipe underneath it so the swale starts on the other side.
Okay.
Just in case that burn brings all the water down past his yard, but all into his driveway after that.
Does any board member have any questions for our DPW director? Okay, thank you. Mr. Bragger. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Bragger from the board? Okay. Anything else to present, Mr. Bragger?
Uh, no, I think that's it.
Okay. So I'm gonna open it up for public comment if there's anybody in the audience who would like to speak on this petition? Yes, sir. No, you can, you can, does no one else raise their hand? So please come up. Could you just state your name and address for the record, please?
Uh, Jonathan Jeffries, 33 Cutler Court. Um, I guess I have a couple of comments, and I guess there's still some misunderstandings. Um, it's curious that there was a meeting today, and I wasn't informed. I've been asking for, I guess, over two years now for a meeting, a formal meeting with the Public Works or the Planning Board.
I'm gonna clarify and not jump in. It was myself, the planning department, and the build, uh, the DPW department that went to the property. Um, it was two property owners that came out when they saw us. We didn't have a scheduled meeting.
I understand that, but, um, in over two years, I've asked several times, uh, starting with Mr. Woodhead. I've got to a point where Mr. Woodhead would not even reply to me. Um, nobody has actually met me on the property, so I can show firsthand exactly what the problem is, show some videos on the phone of the conditions I experienced when there's heavy rain. Um, and, you know, it seems as if we're set to make a decision this evening, and nobody's actually been to the site. And I, I'd say, I am the person with a problem. Um, my neighbors have somewhat of a problem, but their problem, water that goes onto their property, comes back onto my property, so it's still my problem. Nobody has met me on site to actually have a witness who's been there during several rainstorm events, where I shared some videos, where there's two inches of standing water right up to my property basement, where there's a, a window well, there's an actual window into my basement that's subgrade. Um, it, it's not nice seeing all that water come at you. There's one instance, Mrs. Ware might recall, I actually wasn't present. We've probably had five events where there's been significant flooding on the property. There was one event, I wasn't at home, I was away, but it was with a strong southerly wind, and you, you may recall this, or you recounted to me where, again, it was a heavy rainstorm with gale-force winds from the south. Water wasn't even draining down the street. All the water that was landing on the street was being blown up, and that was coming onto my property. Um, you, you witnessed that, I didn't.
Mr. Jeffries, you, 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 you gotta talk to the board.
There is a problem with drainage. I agree that there's a crown to the road. My issue is, there isn't a crown to the circle. And a crown, the, the practice, as I understand it for a circle, is not to crown it like a road, but to crown it from the center radially out. Mr. Bragger's proposal is to crown it like a roadway, which, again, distributes water unevenly from that surface. His measure to stop that uneven, still uneven distribution of water coming onto my property is a Cape Cod berm, which, when it's first put there, I agree, probably will work. It'll work better if the four-foot, you know, town setback is raised a few inches to match as well. It'll work better if the swale on the southern side actually crosses through a pipe to the other side of my drain, uh, driveway, as was originally planned. It was planned to cross the driveway. It falls short, as it does, um, on the, on the western side. I have no issues on the western side. Those, the concerns there are general concern as one of the six, uh, residents of Cutler Court, because what I've seen is any water that ends up on the road stays on the road, and there's an erosion problem on the apron of Cutler Court onto Glen Road. The more water you send down the road, the bigger the problem on the apron for erosion. I mean, this stuff is, is just common sense, where you've got a steeper grade than two and a half percent in water traveling, and there's, there's no, um, uh, the, the road isn't finished, it's gonna carry material away. Um, currently, we haven't had a lot of rain, but the entry point into the swale, if this plan is proposed, which is to the south of, of my driveway, um, during the time of those, that wetter period over the last two years, the, uh, bank of the swale between the road and the basis was washing out. Um, there's been no maintenance done to the swales since I've been there, other than the residents mowing, you know, the swales, and a lot of the pipes are already filling up with dirt. I also shared a video where it wasn't a particularly significant heavy rainfall enough to cause flooding, but the swales were filled to capacity. Um, so I did raise some questions. Whose responsibility is it to maintain the swales? And any problems from, I don't know, plowing the Cape Cod berm off? Because the plows can't make that turn. They plow the, the snow straight onto the paper road section, because they can't, they can't plow around that, the big truck plows that come in our driveway. And that means the, the blade is gonna be crossing that Cape Cod berm. It'll just plow it off. And once that's off, with an exaggerated crown, no swale, that's just gonna send more water onto my property. It, it doesn't make any sense.
So, so I'll, I'll address the first comment. So the Cape Cod berm is, is integral to the paving. We have them all over town. I think Mr. Woodhead and, and Mr. Rodrick's would tell you they don't get plowed off. They stay in place once they're placed.
But on straight roads?
On straight roads and curved roads.
But we're talking about?
They're, they're on cul-de-sacs, they're on cul-de-sacs as well. They don't, they don't get plowed off.
Okay. If they do get plowed off, is that a town responsibility?
The road itself is a town responsibility, but anything into the drainage system, that's that's.
But there isn't a drainage system there.
Can you please let me finish? So I got a copy of the Homeowners Association that was circulated to us, to the board members. Anything that is involved in the system itself is the responsibility of the homeowners. That includes the swales.
We don't have one.
What's that?
We don't have one.
Well, you do, actually. You do have a homeowners association.
It's never part of my purchase.
It's actually, and I, I'll defer to the town solicitor, but it was filed in 2018. It's the, by deed, there's an association.
Well, Mr. Connor told me when I purchased the property that there wasn't one.
I, I, I don't know what to tell you on that, but there is, there's something filed in 2018 that the homeowners are the, are the folks that are responsible for it. Now, you might not have formed your association officially, but there, there is a document that's on file with the town that.
Well, I've been there two years. There's been no animal, animal meetings. There's been no fees rate. There's been no.
Again, they're self-managed. I can't tell you how to manage it, but it's a self-managed process. Um, getting back to your next question, you know, Mr. Bragger is a registered professional engineer. Uh, Mr. Melville is responsible to put the top coat on. He's, he's got, we've seen testimony now from Mr. Bragger, as a registered professional engineer, that he believes that this solution will solve your water problem. Um, but the town Public Works Director's been out there and looked at it. He also believes that this will solve the problem. I think we have to give him a shot to see if we can solve the problem.
If it doesn't work, what then?
We haven't accepted, we haven't accepted it yet. So I, I, I think one of, and I'm not speaking for the board, but I think we, we do have to give him a chance to try and resolve this.
Um, I've searched online for homeowners association for Cutler Court. I can't find anything about it.
Well, there's a, there's a deed on file.
Broker.
I don't wanna get into it, you sir, but you could go to, you can go to town, town evidence, and there's a copy of it in town evidence, land evidence.
That's a piece of paper. There is, I have no knowledge of any homeowners.
I'm not a lo, I'm not a lawyer, but I did read it. It says, you, you, even if you didn't recognize it as a deed, in your deed, you are still part of this homeowners association. And I, I'll, I'll defer to counsel if he's got anything to add on this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, we can get you a copy of the homeowners association.
I've seen it that's been submitted in. I know nothing about it.
Okay. You need to check.
I would not have bought my property had I known it existed.
You need to check your deed.
It's not on my deed.
Okay, then, that, send legal a copy of your deed. Um, I'm subject to the same type of homeowners association in my last home. It references it in the deed. Does it have any deed restrictions in the deed, like no boats or no campers or any of that? You don't know? Get, get?
I know nothing.
Okay.
I, one, it was one of the points we checked. The prior property we were gonna purchase was part of a homeowners association. We stopped the, the purchase process because we did not want to buy a home in a homeowners association.
Okay. You did. Just get legal a copy of your deed.
Well, through misrepresentation.
That's nothing to do with the town. That may be you, you're real, we don't have to talk about any of that tonight. You can get, you can get me a copy of your deed legal. You have the email address. I will review the deed and see if the word homeowners association are in there. If not, I will advise you, and then you can take it from there with whoever you need to. But that's not an issue for the town.
Okay, at this point. So before you go, sir, does any board member have any questions for Mr. Jeffries? Okay. Thank you, sir. Mr. Woodhead, I think you're in line. Could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Brian Woodhead, 11 Anne Ave, Portsmouth, Rhode Island. I just wanna clarify something. I had, I did meet Mr. Jeffries on site down there and showed him the plans that we were, that the planning board approved and what we were going over years ago. And then we started emailing war back and forth, and then that's when our solicitor told me no more communications with Mr. Jeffries, because it was just an email war back and forth. So I just wanna clarify, I did meet Mr. Jeffries down there. When he says he never met anyone down there, I did meet him down there. So I just.
Okay, thank you.
That's all I want, sir.
Mr. Jeffries, I'm gonna go to this, this, uh, but, uh. Uh, please come up, sir.
Um, it wasn't a formal meeting.
You get, you guys.
It wasn't a formal meeting. It was arranged. Mr. Woodhead was there looking at the drainage. I went out and spoke with him. It was completely nonproductive.
Okay. Thank, thank you.
That's what I mean by, I requested a formal meeting. It's never been given, I've never been extended that opportunity.
But we, but, but we, we did have a formal meeting last month. We heard your testimony. I told you personally, we're gonna try and help you.
Thank you.
Okay? All right. Thank you. Ma'am, could you please come up and state your name and address for the record?
I'm Susan Ware, 41 Cutler Court. Uh, I was, I went out today when I saw everybody on the street, and I was very grateful that they were there, and I thanked them very much. Um, I don't, I'm hoping that this solution will work. I am not at all confident that it will. First of all, putting a berm on half, two-thirds of the cul-de-sac, I think it's gonna look kind of odd that it's not uniform, but that's just an aesthetic point of view. There was a discussion today on site as to whether there should have been a rain garden or a rain drain or something in the middle, because the original site plans called for something in the middle, like a roundabout, and in the middle. I don't know that that would work. My questions were, who was going to, to take care and maintain that? I do think it is the responsibility of this planning board to address the homeowners association. Sir, I have looked at my deed and my purchase and sale and emailed both to my attorney yesterday. We didn't know. We never, in fact, I specifically asked.
Ma'am, I'm gonna have to stop you there, because we're, we're, we're getting off with the agenda point.
It's not off of the agenda point, because what happens, and Mr. Jeffrey's point was, what happens when this doesn't work? What happens when it fails? And who's going to take care of it? And now you're telling us that a homeowners association that none of us knew was in existence and none of us would have bought, or that I know of would have bought. So you can't go backwards.
We're trying to address the road problem right now. That's the responsibility of the planning board. We are not addressing the.
I think that they're both, I think that they're both connected.
Okay, I appreciate your opinion.
Because if you, if you do something to the road that's going to make the situation worse, we have to clarify who's responsible, who's responsible for all of these swales that exist now. Who's responsible for cleaning out the mud and the dirt and everything? I think it's very, very relevant to this. Thank you.
Our, our solicitor is gonna look into it.
Yeah, and let, let me just add, the chairman correctly said, when, when I said that's not the issue before the board, he added the caveat, "At this time." That's correct. We're gonna get the deeds. They should talk all about the homeowners association. If they do not, don't fret. Then legal is gonna investigate, and we will make a recommendation on what to do about that. The chairman has said we have not accepted this subdivision yet, and we're not going to accept it, I would imagine, until the issues are worked out to the satisfaction of the board.
Okay. Does anybody else in the audience like to speak? Either Ms. Hitchens or Mr. Rodrick, has anything else to add? Okay.
I have nothing else to add.
Uh, Mr. Mr. Harding, go ahead.
The one thing, and having been on this board for a long time, Mr. Bragger has been an expert, uh, in this kind of work, and he has never once failed in doing a correction or what he thought it was right, that it, there never was a time that it didn't work out. So I can't guarantee that it's all nice and warm and fuzzy, but I can tell you, as a, probably many, many years on this board, if Mr. Bragger says that this is gonna work, he's one of the guys that I do have trust in. So that's just my opinion, and just to give you a little feeling that it's, in my opinion, it's probably gonna work. That's all.
Thank you. Any other members of the board wanna speak? Mr. Jeffries, I'm gonna give you one more shot, okay? This is it, please.
I, I appreciate the time you've given me. It's my problem as I see it, and I'm trying to represent myself. Um, I object to a berm across my driveway where a pipe underneath it is more appropriate. I do not want to drive over a, a three-inch speed bump every time I enter and leave my property. That wasn't the style of property I bought.
I, I, I believe that we asked Mr. Bragger to clarify that the berm would start north of your driveway. Is that correct, Mr. Bragger? The berm starts north of Mr. Jeffrey's driveway? Okay, okay. So it will, it will not be on your driveway? So it will, it will not be on your driveway?
On the plan, it shows it coming to the south side of the driveway.
Excuse me, it does show going across the front of his driveway. I do believe though that when the pavers are out there building or putting the top coat on, putting the berm in, they certainly can just kind of blend the back of that berm into his driveway a little. It's a fairly insignificant thing to drive over, but when the paving machine's out there, I'm sure they could just kind of massage the, the rear of that berm into his driveway. So it's not really a factor.
Okay.
I just feel that's the best solution. I've driven over many, this is just a three-inch berm, by the way. It's not a full four or five or six-inch berm, just enough to keep the water on the road. That's about all I have to say.
Is there any, Mr. Bragger, I know you described in detail what the proposal is with the crown, the berm. Is there any, any change from what you originally testified earlier today?
No.
Okay, all right.
So I'd just like to object to a speed bump.
Understand. Okay. Does the board have, what's the board's pleasure? Mr. Bragg has testified as to what the, the solution is. So if you, if you do come up with a motion, I would incorporate his testimony into your motion. Can you speak in, speak in the microphone, Kate, the other one? Thank you.
All right, I shall attempt. There is an outstanding issue with the final drive, final surface course.
Correct.
And that it is judgment with Mr. Braga that in certain areas that the pavement be raised two inches per plan to create a better defined berm. Is recommended that the, we do clean and that the contractor clean, flush any pipes and swales after the resurfacing. And that there be a Cape Cod berm which at the driveway of 41 Cutler. The 41.
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three?
Yeah.
A 33 Cutler not be made so that it's a speed bump. And upon the resurfacing that we follow up to see if any resolution and if it is a problem, then we consider more swales and a pipe underneath the driveway.
Okay.
Thirty-three.
Heather, you got that motion? Okay. Is there a second on Ms. Wilson's motion?
I, I will second it with a, I guess a time limit that how long that this has to be tested before that's accepted.
So that's a good question. Maybe we just pause for a minute. Mr. Bragg, do you, is it, is your client's intention to start this immediately to get it done this year? Oh, he's here, sorry.
Yes.
That's Mr. Melville from the audience. Yeah, please.
Connor Melville, 39 Thurston Avenue, Newport, Rhode Island. We would love to complete this road.
So we're going to do everything in our power to get it done this calendar year?
Yes, yeah. I, it will legitimately, we will try our hardest and in good faith, get this road complete.
Thank you.
That's our goal.
I, I think we stick with the calendar year because I don't know when the plants close, so.
Yeah, it's getting to a, it's getting to a very difficult crunch time, especially with schedules. I, I would love to get this complete, but every company has its own workload. We've, I do this, I develop a lot. I'm certainly at the mercy of the plant and of the contractors who will be completing this.
Okay.
But we will, we will.
I, I, maybe the best suggestion is to give them to the end of the calendar year.
All right, that would be done by the end of the calendar year. Oh, I amend it. End of the calendar year.
Except I'm also curious for the sake of the people that live on the road, how long before they can finally say, okay, this did the trick?
We're not going to accept it until we.
Okay.
I think that would answer your question.
Okay, that's great.
So did you second the motion?
I'll say, yes, I did, yes.
You got that, Heather? Okay, all right. Any more discussion on the motion? I'm going to call for a vote all. Go ahead, Leah.
Can we have some clarification? Ms. Wilson mentioned, so it's not a speed bump. Can we clarify or provide more clarity?
Yeah, I think. So, so maybe one of the things we will require if, 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 if the board agrees is that Mr. Braga will supervise the installation of that, of that berm on the driveway. So we can craft it the way we just discussed. Does that make sense?
Okay, then Mr. Braga be on site when the berm is installed.
Great.
Yeah, I will second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? I'll call for a vote all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up on our agenda is item number four, Elm Street. Portsmouth Heights subdivision progress report. At the June planning board meeting, Harkins Development Company was granted an extension to September to remedy outstanding work to be completed, including final top course, reestablishment of drainage grates, swales, removal of silt from drainage pond, installation of concrete bounds, completion of ASBILs, installation of loom and seed after the final paving to complete the roadway. We did grant an extension to the applicant to the September 11th planning board meeting. I know, Ms. Hitchen, I understand you were in touch with the applicant?
I have been in touch with Chris Harkins about 3:30 today via email and more importantly, our DPW staff and myself and Ms. Black have been working with Michael Atkinson for the last couple of days and he is present. And Mr. Roderick's, our DPW director, is ready to speak, so we'll let him speak. Then we'll let Mr. Atkinson.
Sorry, name and address again for the record.
Sure, Paul Roderick's, 90 Fury Avenue, Tiverton, Rhode Island.
Thank you.
So progress has started. They mowed the detention ponds and they've done some dig safes. As soon as 9/12, they'll be completed on the dig safe so that they can do the riprap and clean out all the swales and retention ponds. We met with the paver and the general contractor who's here and we marked out all the binder on the road that has to be replaced before the top coat goes on. He's understanding of that. And he said he would like to try to get the road paved within the next three weeks.
So based on what we discussed last, last month or the month before, you're reasonably assured that we've got sufficient progress and we're moving in the right direction?
Correct.
Great. Any, any questions from board members for Mr. Roderick's? Go ahead, Ms. Wilson.
Well, actually, this is for Mr. Braga.
Well, you can't, you can't go back.
No, this was for the Elm. Mr. Braga, were you also did the design for the Elm Street?
Yes, I did.
Okay, all right. I thought you were going backwards. No problem, no problem.
That's why I'm still here.
Got it.
Well, yes, I remember because.
Mr. Bragg, his name and address for the record, please.
John Bragg, Jr., 144 Rhode Island Boulevard, Portsmouth, Rhode Island.
Okay, there was a question about some bushes that were on the north, no, the south side of the road that someone was concerned about being removed or something. This has to do with utilities. Were the utilities either gas or electric put on that side?
Yeah, yeah. Yes, I, we got the mapage from the water department and Newport Water. And Newport Water is on that side of the street, but it is under the road. It's not on the side of the road in the town's right of way. And also Portsmouth Water is on the opposite side of the road.
Okay.
But there is a problem that they did plant all their abovites in the town right of way. So future utilities or anything that has to happen in that right of way, those abovites will have to be removed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just, just for the record, I was hired by the Harkins Company to set the bounds and to do the ASBILs. Just want to let you know that that's been progress too.
Thank you. Excellent. Anything else, Mr. Roderick's?
Um, also, there's a problem with the homeowners association there. Just wanted to let you know.
Okay, thank, thank you.
Nobody believes there's a homeowners association, so after we accept this, they don't think they're responsible for maintaining anything.
Really? So, so you gotta come to the podium and name and address for the record, please.
Uh, Michael Atkinson, 647 Highland Ave, Dartmouth, Massachusetts.
And what's your affiliation with the?
WC Excavation. Mr. Hawkins is GC for everything.
Okay.
So we did meet out there earlier this week and again, to clarify it with the administrator about the homeowners insurance, Chris, uh, the homeowners association. Chris is working on that. We just got told while we were walking out that one house has been sold three times and like they didn't have an idea either. So about the swales, I've cleaned them. There's a couple that I have to dig, but I have to wait for a dig safe. I'm in the process of that as of the 12th. We cleaned out the retention ponds like they wanted to. And Paul and I and Gavin have talked about the cul-de-sac. Instead of milling the whole cul-de-sac, Paul, we are going to rip it up and repave a whole binder according to the asphalt guy because he didn't think it was, you know, savable. So we are working on that. Hopefully next week, I'll be out there on Monday doing the swales because that's when my dig safe is done. John will be setting the, with the bounds with me. The asphalt is set toward the end of the week. Once I'm done cleaning the swales, because I want to be off. And we got a letter from both homeowners about the ponds out in the back and the swale out in the front. Leah's got it.
Yeah, I think they were circulated.
Yeah. The man, the man at the first house, I forget his name. He didn't give me his name. He just. Matt. He wanted the abovites there. He's going to maintain them. He's going to trim them back because he didn't want to look at that house next door. I told him he had to trim them way back. And I did some research with the water and there's no gas on that premises whatsoever. It's all propane. So I clarified where the utilities are. So we're working on it. John's going to do an ASBIL, fours of everything before I rip out the cul-de-sac. But it will be paved by hopefully the end of next week. If not, the beginning of the following. And then hopefully we'll be done, solve the problems. But the, the man that we spoke to at the beginning, Gavin and I, didn't want the swale in the front yard. He said everything is working. He's got a little putting green there and he didn't want me to dig it out. So he sent the letter because I had to be the bad guy to go and knock on his door. So.
All right, any, any questions? Yes, sir. To Roderick's.
So at the top of the road, there is a swale missing where he's saying the putting golf is. I don't know if Bron, John Bragger is okay with that, but I would believe it would need an exemption.
Okay.
Because it's not according to plans.
So I, I guess we'll have to deal with it as, after, as an ASBIL to accept the ASBIL as, as an ASBIL construction. Okay. Ms. Hitchen, anything else for, for this petition?
I have nothing else to add other than we appreciate finally working with Mr. Atkinson and making some progress in the last couple of days.
Okay, so should we continue this to the October meeting for an update?
I think we should have Mr. Atkinson or whatever representative come back for October, give a progress report and however many months you want to extend or however much more time Mr. Atkinson thinks he can complete the, the necessary work.
So why don't, whatever the board's pleasure is, maybe we could continue this for an update to the October 9th meeting? Is that the correct date? What's the, what's the board's pleasure?
Make a motion to continue the Elm Street.
Elm Street Portsmouth Heights subdivision progress.
Subdivision progress. To the October 9th meeting for a progress report.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I will second that.
Luke seconded. Any discussion on that motion? I'll call for a vote on the motion all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Next up is the town planner report.
So I had a, gave you folks a little test by not giving you an actual packet because as of September 1st, we are moving to OpenGov for planning application submissions. And last year, state legislation created new, a bill that by October 1st, 2025, all planning applications across the state had to be submitted electronically. So this September 1st, we had a soft opening for planning applications being submitted electronically be through OpenGov. So from now on, we will be using the OpenGov platform for applications to be submitted through that platform. Zoning applications had started being done that way back in April and building permits have been done that way since 2017. So we will be forwarding you and you will be accessing applications via, via OpenGov from now on. So we will, it's a learning curve for all of us. And I will be, Kristen and I will be creating like a cheat sheet as how you review these plans and big, you know, 24 by 36 plans, but unfortunately it's going to be all online now. No more of these. Do you hear me?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm a little skeptical. I, I like, I like the fact that we're electronic because I travel a lot, so it's nice to be able to access things. But I do like to put a set of plans in front of me and mark them up.
Yeah, me too.
And they don't have to be full size, even if they were 11 by 17, I'm okay with that.
We will help you and assist you as we move forward. And I, I want you to be comfortable still being able to review a, a plan because, you know, I've, I'd rather, you know, be on a, a scratch pad, like a stone tablet myself as opposed to a, a tablet. But that's how it's going to be and it was the state that created this bill that we are now required to submit applications via OpenGov.
I understand. Any board members got any other opinions? Mr. Kukis.
I don't like it. You know, I have a, I have a question.
You don't like it, Louis, that's what we're doing.
It's tough to teach an old dog new tricks. Do we get it? Do we get it stiffened for ink and paper?
No.
Well, is it going to be possible that we print ourselves?
That was my question. Is it possible that in the event that I, you can't see the print because it's so tiny or enlarge it or my printer at home, which is right now not working? Is there a possibility that I could stop by the planning office and get a, a hard copy of, of certain details of the meeting that are going to be in, in the future?
Yeah, hopefully. And on the, the whole point is you can zoom in on some of the smaller details of the plans. But again, we will work with you, Don, and.
But we can still require applicants to submit a package to us, can't we? In our town regulation?
Get away from paper. It's also be like in the cloud.
Sure.
Where anybody can then get the plan.
But maybe for the immediate time being, we could help our board members to.
Yes.
Ease us into this.
I'm trying to get you guys to, you know, download plans on the town website for the last few months because I knew this was coming. I got the sense that you didn't really like that.
Well, again, if, if you, I'm, I'm a tactile person, so I, I print out an 11 by 17 when you send me those. Not everybody has that ability to do that. So.
So we'll, we'll, I'm announcing this. We will work gradually towards this.
Okay.
But the, the applicants now have to submit electronically through this OpenGov system.
Okay.
And this is across the board, across the entire state.
Understand.
Okay. Isn't COT doing this, Kate?
Of the PAP place, um, division is where they submit their plans. But usually we get a copy of it. But usually we get a copy of it.
Oh.
Only because when you're looking at, because I have to look at, you know, the drainage, the utilities, the, the miscellaneous details, the details, and I am going from one sheet to another to make sure one section is exactly what is, the page numbers, um, you know, the traffic control plans, the.
Right.
You know, that's when you can just put it all out and take a look at it. It just makes my life easier because, okay, that's not lining up with this and why is this not working here? When, you know, this detail is not working over here.
I'd be happy to help anybody figure this out as we go forward. I mean, I don't like change either.
No, it's just the point that my screen is only about 22 feet by a, I don't know, two and a half by two feet.
I understand.
And trying to look at the whole project as is. Uh, sometimes that just doesn't work.
Got it.
Well, the other thing is that I don't sit always in front of a computer in that spot.
Yeah.
To do it. I have other places.
Would you prefer that I hand deliver your packet? You like.
Oh, I'm, I'm, I'm not, I have no problem with the getting online and printing and seeing stuff. But in the event that we, for certain reasons, should we need something larger? It would be nice if there was a call and if we had to come and pick it up on our own on that occasion.
Okay.
It would be a softer way to break us into it.
Again, but I, I, I think our application process for the town of Portsmouth says that it's supposed to submit hard copy. And I know you're trying to get away from it. Okay. Well, it's growing pains. We'll, we'll have to figure it out as we go along.
Together.
Okay, all right. Okay, um, next item off is adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made.
Seconded.
Seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Has there ever been anybody that ever objected that?
An adjournment?
To adjournment.
Next time.
No, I'm, I'm happy.